It's Monday, February 1st, 2016. This is the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. I'll call this meeting to order. First off, we need to set the agenda and before we do that, I'd like to recognize our SRO for tonight. Sharon Deese is over here from Harrisburg Elementary. Sharon, thank you for coming out tonight. Before we proceed with actually setting the agenda, I would like to get a motion to remove 5.07 from the agenda and we'll just tape it to a future date.
Remove.
Rob Walter makes the motion that we remove it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Phillips seconds that. All in favor of removing 5.07 from the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That motion carries 7-0. Thank you. All right. Now, I need a motion to approve the agenda for the February 1st, 2016 work session.
Remove.
Mr. Harrison moves.
Second.
Dr. Phillips seconds it. All in favor of the agenda as written, as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And that motion carries 7-0. All right. As you will see tonight, we're actually sitting with a different arrangement. We're trying to create more of a work session venue and so if the public will bear with us, this is an experiment for us to try this different arrangement. So we may have a few little glitches as we work through this and there's definitely a learning curve here. But that will lead us into our report. 3.01 is the update on Wolf Meadow, the balanced calendar. And Ms. Reimer, you're ready to go, right?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Wanted to give you an update on our balanced calendar and where we are with that right now. This update tonight, we want to give you the process that we use to communicate with all the parents and to collect all of our data. We want to give you the student opt-out data. We want to talk about the students that are now choosing Wolf Meadow as a magnet and then talk about our transportation costs for the opt-out students. So, we, on January 4th, we sent a letter home with every K-4 student, a letter of intent. On January 6th, we did Blackboard Connect Eds to discuss door-to-door transportation and make sure that was clarified. On January 12th and 14th, we did two more Blackboard Connect Ed messages to remind parents to return their intents. January 13th, we had an open house to inform parents of opt-out magnet options and for transportation. January 4th through the 15th during that week, the principal contacted every parent who answered no or maybe on an intent letter to try to make sure they understood the entire intent of the balanced calendar and answer any questions that they may have. January 19th through the 22nd, the admin and staff contacted any parents that did not turn in an intent by phone. And then, January 19th through 22nd, we also sent certified letters to all those that could not be reached by phone. At this point, we have 100% of every student accounted for, 487 out of 487 of the intents have been returned or a parent contacted. At this point, we have 444 that are staying at Wolf Meadow and 43 that are choosing to opt out. Out of our opt-out students, we have 43, 7 will be going to Irvin. We have 17 at Weddington Hills. We have 17 at Rocky River. And we have 2 students that are children of teachers that are currently on the transfer list. That's kind of hard to see at the bottom of that, but here are the students that have applied now to Wolf Meadow through our magnet process. We have a total of 51 and as you can see, they come from a wide variety of our elementary schools. Let's talk about transportation for just a second. So this is our transportation diagram and a route for those students that we're going to transfer from Wolf Meadow to Rocky River. If you look at the right, initially, you want to kind of go through the estimate and then we'll talk about the picture itself. So the transportation estimate is a 24.37 miles extra or outside of the zone. And we have a 3.11 driver cost per mile. That is set by our state and I do want to kind of brag about our transportation department there just for a second. That is much lower than many across the state. It's based on our efficiency and how well we do transporting students. So that is a $3.11 per mile. And then, we do that for 180 days. So we have $75 a day times 180 days and it gives you that cost. What you can't see there with the little gray is also a cost of a bus. So Rocky River is on Tier 2. We do not have any available buses on Tier 2 and as you can see, the red line that you see is outside of their zone. So that red line does depict where we'll have to take a bus to pick those kids up and with no buses available, we will have to purchase a bus for that. In a few seconds, you'll see, excuse me, you'll see the breakdown of how we actually put that money in and what we say is that this is one tier out of three tiers. And so if we have to purchase a bus, which we will, this will be Tier 2. Yes, sir?
Is there a lead time of more than a year for a bus?
There is a lead time of more than a year for a bus. So I'm going to put a hitch in there for our budget committee to look at how many we're asking for this year. So what does that mean when we'll be using some of our growth buses that we possibly get this year and have ordered in the past to try to fulfill this? So, there is a lead time of a year. Yes, sir, you are correct. So, however, when we look at this Tier 1 and Tier 3 of that bus, the new bus will still be able to be used for other schools or other tiers to transport students. So we only take 1/3 of the cost and actually apply it to this estimate. We didn't feel like it was a fair estimate to say that we had to use that bus just for students going to Rocky River. So that's Rocky River. Total cost there is $41,975 to transport from Wolf Meadow to Rocky River. Yes, sir?
And of that, it's only the mod bus costs that will be recurring, right? The $28,000, just the first year, but going beyond this, we could...
Correct.
...offer this way, it would be the $13,000.
Yes, sir. If the board were to continue with that, yes. Yes, the cost would not be the bus any longer, but just the cost of transportation. So from Wolf Meadow to Weddington Hills, you can see the route there and we use the exact same formula, obviously. And Weddington Hills is also on Tier 2 and there are no buses available and so therefore that would be a second bus that we would have to purchase. Again, only using 1/3 of that bus because there are three tiers and the first and third tier would be able to be used to transport other students. And again, I can't see the amount there on this frame. It's all ahead of me. Finally is Wolf Meadow to Irvin. And you can see Wolf Meadow to Irvin, we do not purchase a third bus based on the fact that Irvin is on the first tier and we can use the current bus, which was one of the reasons why Irvin was one of our recommendations, although we recognize the board's wishes to give parents options. The purpose of Irvin being our first choice was that they're on the same tier and those students that are outside that zone are very close to the Irvin zone and therefore does not cost as much and certainly no purchase of the extra equipment there. Yes, sir?
Do we have an approximate number of minutes that a mile equates to? We've said 20-something miles and 30-something miles and now 17.74 miles. How many minutes is that on the bus? If you don't have it, that's fine, but I just want to impress on people that 30-mile bus trip for their children would be X number of minutes if we were able to guesstimate that or approximate that.
We can work on that for you. We do not have that in our presentation, Ellen, but I can certainly ask Transportation to take a look at that for us.
Thank you.
So in conclusion, with all three zones, 2 buses and the total cost to actually transport once we have that equipment is $98,108. And it's very hard for me to see this. I'm going to have to wear my glasses back here. So this is just, kind of puts it all together in one little chart and it goes through Rocky River and the cost to actually do that and kind of explains again the Tier 2, from Wolf Meadow to Weddington and Wolf Meadow to Irvin. It talks about the bus that we have to buy, 2 buses needed, and then it divides it by 3 so it shows you where we get that money. And then it talks about the $3.11 for the driver cost, again, set by the state, and then our final estimate of $98,108.
Now that's just the first year. You said it would go down the second, third, correct?
Yes, ma'am. The first year, based on the purchase of 2 buses, the equipment that it would cost to get those buses on Tier 2. And then the following year, we would not have to purchase those buses again. We would just have to use the actual transportation cost, which is the mileage times the bus driver's cost.
And again, we're only talking about the children that opt out and we're not talking about the summer program or anything else. We're only talking about the opt-out children, which is a total of 43 children.
43 children, yes, ma'am.
And we're not talking anything about the other children that are, the ones that are coming from the other 51 or anything that are coming from other schools, correct?
That is correct. Only the students that are choosing to leave or opt out of Wolf Meadow.
Okay.
43 students, yes, ma'am.
So, of the 100,000, or 98,000, 41, 442, so 41,000 and change will be a recurring expense for transportation every year after this year.
Essentially, yes, sir.
Now, in the, I know last March, we were presented and it was said that 2 buses would be roughly 90,000 apiece. And then in October, we had a presentation when we voted that there were going to be no transportation costs. That was part of that presentation associated with this year-round calendar. Of course, transportation wasn't provided for those that were forced to move. So now we've got $100,000 this year in transportation costs that weren't, were not presented in October when we voted on it. That just seems like a lot to spend to go to a year-round calendar to me, but I guess there's nothing we can do about it now, just spend the money and not have it to spend somewhere else, I guess.
The presentation and the recommendation from the staff obviously was not to provide transportation, but once the board did vote that direction and ask us to do that, this is the estimate that we came up with.
The kids that are opted to come to Wolf Meadow, now they provide their own transportation, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And we do not have any idea of cost for the summer programs until probably it happens?
We can come up with an estimate for that if you ask me to come up for an estimate for that. It's probably going to be in the ballpark of $50,000 for some of that. It's not, I mean, that's a guesstimate for sure, but if you directed it, I'd be happy to come up with that for you.
By summer, would you mean the...
Inter sessions, yes, sir.
So it's not, I knew what you meant, but I just wanted to make sure what else.
I will add to that, Mr. Ferder, in working with Mr. Auerbach, they have been able to get some funding to try to help with some of that. We're not sure exactly where they are and how much they have fully secured, but there will be some.
Dr. Reimer, if I may, sometimes in the public content of the agenda online, the staff puts their formal recommendation in there and that's not in this particular one without putting words in your mouth. Can you tell me your recommendation again, please?
So initially, the staff recommendation was to not provide transportation for the students that were choosing to opt out. However, I think the board pretty much directed us to give you that estimate and that was your intent and so this is a board request and at your request, here's our $100,000. If you ask me again, would my recommendation be the same as it was to begin with? Yes, sir.
So you've confirmed your original feeling, or your kind of intuition. You've quantified it here for us that it, and again, this is putting words in your mouth, so we'll say they're my words, that it's cost prohibitive.
It would not be the recommendation of the staff.
Yeah, this $100,000 is on us. It's on the board, it's not on the staff.
No, no.
But they've quantified it for you.
No, sir. We have not looked at a hub stop for these students. We, I'm the directive to go door by door, pretty much stops, and that's the direction we took.
Could possibly.
Could possibly. I think I've been somewhat surprised as I've learned transportation, how expensive hub stops are as well. But I think it could reduce some, but I couldn't tell you exactly how much. We can certainly check into that if you wish.
We probably need a new bus. Is that right?
We need multiple buses in general. I will say that we're asking, if you're part of the budget committee, you know, we were asking for multiple buses for growth and this adds to that.
Are you saying that, are we saying that this cost hypothetically would come from fund balance? Where would this happen from if we chose to go down that path?
Okay, so that is a Kelly Klutz question and I'll refer to her.
So our capital cost for the bus, is it on?
These don't work.
These don't work?
You have to use that one.
Have to use that one?
Yeah, but it's not going to go that far.
Okay, go ahead.
So the capital cost would be something that we're asking the county for and that we always do. So the number of buses that we're asking for is 20 in the budget committee this year. So a portion of those or one of those would come from there. That also means that we have to, if we get 10 of those buses and we really need 12 and this adds on another 2/3 of a bus, then that means we're compromised and we have to make decisions in the transportation department that impact our students. It could be longer routes, it could be, you know, further distances to, the kids have to walk, those kinds of things. But whatever the number of buses that we get, we're requesting 20. If we get 12, then we have to make that fit, transportation does. So that cost is a capital cost and we'll get those dollars from the county. And then, of course, you have the transportation cost. There's 2 funding sources for the operating, 2 funding sources for transportation. One is state transportation dollars and the other is local transportation dollars. We already exceed the state allotment by about a couple million dollars and that comes out of local. We've tried to reduce that number, that local number, over the years, but essentially, if you decide to increase the cost associated, there's nothing we can do except for fund that from local. And so that's, again, as you said, a $41,000 reoccurring cost that we'll have every year until you change your decision.
And this is not necessarily a financial question, but with voting to make Wolf Meadow a year-round program and about 90, give or take 90% of the existing students and families have decided to stay with that program and continue year-round, what are we, I know we're talking about $98,000 here for the first year, are we saving anything in transportation costs with the students who are going to stay at Wolf Meadow?
So I think that's a good question and one that I had as well. Actually, probably not because the routes that they ran before, they'll still have to run even though they're not picking up a student here or a student there. So if all of these students had come from the exact same area, you could probably say possibly. But now that they're not, the bus routes are still going to be very similar.
So this is still a net increase of approximately the $98,000 or something close to it? There's not some cost savings on the other end?
Yes, sir.
I just want to go down that path to be sure. Thank you.
The only thing that really concerns me, just, am I, am I?
Yeah.
The only thing that concerns me in one aspect is we try to be equitable to everybody, all children. And what, 3 weeks ago, 4 weeks ago, we wouldn't get a bus for the children from Royal Oaks when we had 20-something children that, when we were taking them to, having to take them to another school, we said, aye, we can't buy a bus for them. And, you know, when we were doing that transfer. And, you know, that was too much and we couldn't do that when we wanted to do transportation or even thought about it and trying to be equitable for everyone. And I know this is a new program and then we wanted to look at it, we asked for the cost and we've seen the cost now. And it's a pretty big chunk and we're already asking for 20-something buses and we don't know if we'll get that. But again, we have to look at what's equitable and that is a concern I have. I mean, I'm just putting that concern out there after we've already told one group of parents, hey, sorry, we can't afford a bus. Then we turn around, we say, okay, we're going to get 2 buses. And that is a concern of mine. I'm just putting that concern out there because we did tell those other ones, we can't afford a bus. So that's just something to consider.
Maybe 2 last questions. Maybe the good news is that we now have a formula. Maybe we always did have a formula of $3.11 per mile and all the other variables in here, but every time we talk about transportation, this is basically going to be the, formula is kind of what I'm hearing, all other things being equal. So what hap, I don't mean this as a rhetorical question, what happens to the 43 students whose families are having especially difficult times with transportation and with the schedule? I don't expect here and now to have an answer to that, but it's not a theoretical question. It's real to those families.
Sure.
And I mean it for all of us, not just for yourself, Dr. Reimer. What happens to those families? I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm not sure what, you know, what else we can do from our end in terms of helping with the transition.
I certainly understand the question and understand the hardship and the fear, the hardship for families. I do believe that we're going to see, and this is just my personal belief, a really positive thing at Wolf Meadow and I think data shows that and people we've spoken to last week say that as well, but I do certainly understand your question and do not have an answer for that.
I don't have any questions. I have just got to make a few comments. First, I just remind everyone on the board that Wake County has a number of year-round schools and for every single one of them, they offer transportation out of the year-round school boundary to the alternative school. So this is not something unique that we would be doing. I also say, I'm impressed that there's more parents that want to come in than go out. And, I mean, look at this, there are students that are even coming from Odell on the far western side of the county. So we may actually be getting a little bit of relief in some of our more crowded schools just by having this option available. And finally, I would just remind everyone that we are now in competition. You don't have to go to Cabarrus County schools and I think if you do the calculation of how much we're spending per student, we're still going to net out positive and if we lost these students to the competition.
Any other comments? Mark? Thank you, Dr. Reimer. Our board members, that carries us to item number 4.
I'm sorry, Dr. Schumaker, just a kind of a procedural question as we move from this topic. This is a report, so there's no vote on this?
There's no vote for this particular item. We could put it up for vote and I could have a motion to say that you would want to have something, some type of vote in our business meeting if someone wanted to move that so that we vote on this transportation plan. But at this point, there was not, we weren't thinking that there would need to be a vote because the board already made the policy that we were going this route. So if someone wants to make a motion that, to vote on this transportation plan as outlined here tonight, then they could so do it and then we would put it on the action agenda for next, for our next meeting to be actually voted on. So it would just, a vote on putting it on the action agenda is what I would look at. It wouldn't be a vote on the motion, just a vote on moving this to an action item for the next meeting. Does that sound correct, Mark?
Yes, I think you would want to, since the board voted to provide the transportation, really, if someone wants to change that vote, you'd have to then have an agenda item to consider whether the transportation provided. Because I think as it stood, the board, you know, said we're going to provide transportation, asked for information how much it's going to cost. So you've gotten a report tonight saying this is the budgetary impact. So that's, you're right, I don't think there's an action. If someone wanted to, you know, propose an action to be taken up next week, then a board member would need to make a motion and say, I'd like an action item for next week to do whatever, to either not provide transportation or look for other funding, but that's, I think that'd be the right procedure.
Wouldn't we have to try, I thought we were going to vote on a transportation plan, approve of a transportation plan. I don't think we set that in stone last time on what the transportation plan was.
That was my understanding, too. We just asked for the information. It was my understanding, we still needed to vote on the plan, but I see this is a report. Is that what your understanding was?
I mean, I don't know, you know, if we go back and look at the rest of the leisure, whether we said, you know, we're going forward or not, but I know that in the discussion, we said, hey, look, parents need to know whether we're going to offer transportation or not when they make their vote as to whether to stay or go. And so let's tell them, we're going to offer transportation, but with a caveat that if the number's too big, we're going to have to go back to them and say, hey, look, it's too big, we can't, we can't, this is more than we thought it was going to be. So I think it is appropriate to have a vote next week to say, all right, now that we've seen the data, you know, let's make a decision. Is this still the way we want to go or not? And I say that as somebody who thinks this is the way we should go. But I also think that we need to be together on this and I don't want anyone to think like we're forcing this down anyone's throat.
I think a good point is also that the presentation has changed since I was able to view it. I think it's kind of increased some of the numbers. We, I guess we got information back from parents and the financial impact has changed a little bit since I was able to view it. So that's just a kind of, maybe it's a procedural concern, but I've raised the issue before with other presentations that we need to, you know, if we're going to give it to the board to look at ahead of time, then maybe it should match what we see up here. I know it's, I get it and understand the information came in late, but in other cases, it hasn't. Just, that's just a concern.
And I will clarify that today, to speak of, Mr. Auerbach was, has called numerous times and was able to get all 3 of the 3 that were remaining. When I sent the PowerPoint to Ms. Monroe, I told her that we'd be updating regularly so that she could have it and have it posted in time and knowing that we would have parents that we would be able to contact. That's how it happened, so.
I was just thinking, if we are going to propose, vote on something, I might like to see the hub stop cost and I'd also like to see if we, since we know how many students we have now, if that's enough, if it can be accommodated at one school, or we just choose one school and see if we can just do it with one bus instead of having to go through $100,000.
What are you saying? Are you saying just give them a choice of school?
I'm saying if that's going to, if that is our ability to still provide transportation, if that's all we can do, then that would be something to consider.
You know, I'll just add a little something since we're going to be just laying a while. You know, when that was first presented to us, I was really impressed with Wolf Meadow and their staff and wanting to do something different, kind of out of the box to, for their... kinda out of the box to further students and, and I applaud them for that. And also, um, like I, I may have said in our earlier meeting that I talked to some people in Union County who, who did this to similar, to similar schools like Wolf Meadow and they were highly recommended it. And that sold, that sold me. But I still think maybe this, we should learn a lesson from this little exercise, because I made a comment a long time ago that we may have put the cart before the horse. You know, to me, I don't want money to ever get in the way of educating the student, but when we look in the big picture and then look into the budget process, we, we probably need the full cost before we make a deciding vote. But like I said, I still, I, I have no regrets about doing this.
Since, since by and large, this decision was made based on the curriculum, curricular interests of Wolf Meadow and how the academics were gonna be impacted and so forth, would it be possible to find, have the financial impact, impact curriculum instead of transportation? This was not done because of transportation, but yet it's gonna take the financial impact. Could we maybe move part of the 1.1 million that we use on digital resources that are subscription based? Is that possible to move some of that over? Maybe that's a Kelly Klutz question.
So I would say almost anything is possible. Depends on the consequence that you wanna deal with. So, um, I know that there are a significant amount, number of schools and students and teachers that, um, believe that our digital resources are necessary and, and a good spend of our money. So if, if you, as a board, want to make that decision, then certainly that's, um, something that you can do. We, we are contractually bound to certain things and so those, uh, contractions will need to be reviewed by our attorney to see if those, we can get out of those. But if that is the desire of the board, uh, we will do so.
Does that have to come before the board or could that have just, just taken place under the guidelines, I guess, set forth? Would that have to be a board vote? Could that just take place in the normal operating way of operating?
So those, the dollars that are allocated have been selected to use for digital resources. So if you're, if, if we're being directed to do something that we have not decided to do, then yes, the board needs to give us direction to undo a decision that was made by the administration and do what the board has, uh, asked us to do.
My, my suggestion was just that, I think it probably could have been done before coming to the board, just to make this adjustment, uh, financially, to make it happen. But now it's come before the board to, I guess, make that decision next week, um, whether to provide or not provide, which is fine.
There's been no decision and I'll read the motion that was made back in December. And a motion was made by Dr. Jeff Phillips and seconded by Mr. Vince Powell that the board approved the Wolf Meadow Balance Calendar Opt-Out Assignment Plan to include Weddington Hills, WM Irvin, and Rocky, Rocky River Elementary School. Further, the school district will offer door-to-door transportation for students to the opt-out schools. This plan will be revisited in March 2016 once the cost of transportation is known and parents who opt out may change that decision if the board decides in March that it is unable to provide door-to-door transportation. The motion was unanimously approved. In that, the only caveat was that if we bring forth a motion to disapprove the plan, the board was willing to go with the plan back in December. So now we've got it, the numbers before, so it's really up to us to, we wanna go, not go forward with this plan, because I don't see there's a need for us to vote for it. All of us have voted for this. And then if, if the, if we're choking on the number, then that's why we would offer up a, a, a motion to put this on next, next week's, uh, action agenda.
Yeah, I guess I'll put it on, ask it, be put on to discuss again if there's, um, still providing transportation, but if there's a-
I will need a motion so that we could, because this was a report, so it's not a formal, so I need a motion to put this on the next month's action, uh, next week's action agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to put it on the action agenda.
Okay. I need a second for that motion.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion to put the transportation plan and costs on the action agenda for next week. Um, that motion, excuse me?
Do you mean we're gonna talk about it for another forty minutes?
No, we're just gonna put it on there and move on. We'll talk about it for forty minutes next week.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Walter asked for a couple of other options to, to be costed out, so we'll obviously have to talk about that.
We do need some direction there. I need to make sure because some of the things that were presented are very significant changes. Um, and so if that's part of what we bring before we vote, then there's a lot of information that we're looking at and a fairly radical change of the plan because, um, we first suggested Irvin because that was the cheapest as, as Ms. Reimer demonstrated. Then we kinda said, well, we believe staying with your peer group through middle school changes that. If that's the case, then even if you have hub stops, you have three different buses. It's on two different tiers, you still have to buy two buses. So that's fifty thousand dollars before you even start the plan. And I think that's what Ms. Reimer was saying, it may not be ninety-eight thousand dollars, but it's certainly gonna be seventy-five or more, it's gonna be in that boat. Now, we can get that answer, but that's still very different than, are we gonna keep those peer groups together? So if we're gonna do that, then you're really changing what we presented in December.
Well, ho- hold on just a moment. Mr. Walter, what else did you want them to study? Because the intercession, they don't, they're not ready to provide that transportation cost at all.
With the intercession?
With the intercession, um, activities, you, I think you brought that up and I'd asked Chris about it when he thought he could have it.
What I mentioned is before, we had no idea how many students would be opting out. We know now, we have forty students. And my thought, in my, my brain here, that's one bus. Um, so if that's one bus that picks up forty students and if we have a school that can absorb forty students, that would be an option, a, a lot cheaper option, or at least a lot more economical option, that we can still provide door-to-door service, but it's not gonna cost us a hundred thousand plus a recurring expense. That was my thought process. I don't know what, how that adds up or, or what school that would be, but again, that's where I'm thinking.
I think that the danger in that is then you have to resurvey the forty-three kids because now they have a different choice in front of them. And that's, that's where the problem would, would come up is, and maybe, well, I'm not gonna opt out, you know, see, so that's where-
Right. But if we're gonna make any change to it, they have the option to, to revisit their decision. Right. But that's really is a bait and switch. I mean, this board unanimously approved door-to-door. And, and, and the only reason you would vote this down is if this is too big a number to, and you're gonna choke on it. And you literally can't live with it. And if you're gonna, can't live with it, then that, you need to vote it down completely and then decide what you wanna do. But these people did make a commitment based on the way we made this motion last month and we made sure that we articulated that to every single parent, that it was, that this is what the board was planning to do. And, and in my intent, my thinking in talking to each of you was this was what everybody really wanted. So, um, i- if it's too much, then, uh, you know, we've got a motion before us. Mr. Walter has made a motion that we, uh, put this on the action agenda for next week and Dr. Phillips has seconded that motion. Do I have any more discussion?
I mean, there's no way we can back, back out of giving those people choices with the three schools that, there's, there's no, we can't do that. I don't care about the money. I mean, if you can't just do that. It's just my ten cents.
All right, board members, I just need you to vote on this motion. Is any more discussion on it? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor of moving the transportation item to next week's agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we'll vote on that next week? Um, I, I don't, I don't hear anything that says that we change, that they change what they off, what they provide to us.
I was a no, by the way.
Oh, you were a no? Okay, I couldn't hear you, sorry.
You didn't ask for one.
My fault. Forgive me, Tim.
No problem.
I don't, I didn't hear any further information actually needed because, you know, if you send it all, all to, um, in Mr. Walter's case, he, he wanted to send them all, all to Irving. I just don't know if you can get them all there because of the spread outness, but, you know, that's a whole nother transportation issue. You still have the miles. But, um, y'all, if, if someone will write me if they have something that they want them to research, let me, let me know tonight after the meeting. All right, that moves us on to section four. These are the items for our consent agenda. And the first, uh, this is on the first reading, it's the board authority and duties. I didn't see any, um, feedback on that. Is that okay to move to the consent agenda? Yes, sir.
I, I think Mr. Harrison-
Do your best to make sense of what I attempted to add.
I do, yes. So, so what we're, we're adding a line to this provision that references the Leandro case decision. And I think Mr. Harrison had asked for, you know, a little bit of background on what that decision is, what it says about education and whether that's been now adopted into law and some guidance, if we're gonna say we're gonna follow Leandro, what does that really mean? So I, if you give me a couple of minutes, I, I think that's a great question and a good, good opportunity to actually review a little bit of the history of Leandro. A lot of us, you know, know about the case, but it, it's a case that was decided a while ago and has quite a history after. So, um, but it was a nineteen ninety-seven case that was decided by the North Carolina Supreme Court. Leandro was actually a student. The plaintiffs were several students in low wealth school districts, a number of, um, high poverty counties. Hope County ended up being the, the named plaintiff on the subsequent lawsuit after Leandro aged out of the, uh, school system. But he was a student that brought the claim. They were essentially saying that the North Carolina Constitution guaranteed them a sound, basic education and that they were being deprived of that in their schools because they were not learning, they were not able to go out and get jobs, they didn't have the money and the resources. And it challenged the way the state allocated money between the different districts because we had the so-called low wealth districts and high wealth districts. And the lawsuit was against not just the state, but Charlotte Mecklenburg and Wake and the other counties that had more money, more money mainly from local dollars. And we're basically arguing it was a disparity. And it was decided by the North Carolina Supreme Court. Uh, Chief Justice Burley Mitchell, who I'm proud to say is now one of my partners at Wombe Carlisle, wrote the opinion. Um, and he wrote that an education does not serve the purpose of preparing students to participate and compete in the society in which they will live and work if it is devoid, that fails to provide that, is devoid of substance and is constitutionally inadequate. Um, the, the opinion says, we believe that decisions about schools belong with government agencies, the Board of Education, the state, not the courts. But if there's a fundamental failure to provide, uh, a basic education to students, then the courts will get involved and order recourse. I think the key thing for us deciding whether to adopt, uh, agree to provide what Leandro calls for is how, um, the Supreme Court of North Carolina defined a sound basi- basic education under the Constitution. And they said there are four components, and this is a quote from the decision. The first is, um, they must provide students with sufficient ability to read, write, and speak the English language and a sufficient knowledge of fundamental mathematics and physical science to enable the student to function in a complex and rapidly changing society. So it's the language arts and mathematics and science to, to function in today's society. Second, sufficient fundamental knowledge of geography, history, and basic economic and political systems to enable the student to make informed choices with regard to issues that affect the student personally or affect the student's community, state, and nation. Third, sufficient academic and vocational skills to enable the student to successfully engage in post-secondary education or vocational training. And fourth, sufficient academic and vocational skills to enable the student to compete on an equal basis with others in further formal education or gainful employment in contemporary society. So that's what the Supreme Court said a sound basic education was. You've gotta provide fundamental skills in these different areas. That was decided in, in nineteen ninety-seven, as I mentioned. The actual subsequent case, including Hope County, has continued and there were decisions as recently as two thousand thirteen, and the case is still pending. And Judge Manning, who's the trial judge, is still involved. And there've been a number of different challenges to funding proposals. The biggest was a decision in two thousand four that because no pre-K education was provided, um, to students that the state had, had failed to meet its basic education to students because they were unable to learn to read and write. And there were several appeals on that. Ultimately, there was an appeal to the, to the Court of Appeals which held, upheld the decision on pre-K. The legislature then changed the rules regarding, um, pre-K and the Supreme Court said that change mooted it. So we don't have any other Supreme Court cases under the long Leandro, um, lineage. I, I looked it up today, there are now five hundred and fifty-six cases that have cited to or relied on the Leandro decision. So this is really a landmark in education and it's, um, and I haven't read all five hundred and fifty-six myself, but it's a, it's a huge body of law surrounding Leandro. Uh, Mr. Harrison, one of your questions was, well, has this been adopted by statute? How does it apply to the board? I mean, there are a number of statutes that obviously address some of the components of what a basic education is, everything from the North Carolina curriculum to a lot of the guidance that's provided in the general statutes. But I do think it's fair to say that the, the court requirement to provide a basic education arguably goes beyond what may be required under the General Assembly statutes. And so, you know, there's still arguments about whether simply complying with those statutes provides a sound, basic education. I do think that what the board can decide and adopt in this policy is, do we want to adopt and support, you know, the Leandro's definition of a sound, basic education, uh, which I provided? Um, I think that's, that's kinda the issue. I would, if we were not doing it, we could potentially be sued for not providing that sound, basic education. No one has done that. I think, you know, we, we think we provide a pretty good education to our students in Cabarrus and pride ourselves on giving them the tools to compete in the ways that were addressed by the system. So I think our students are fortunate in that regard. But I think that's, this, this is a change from the policies to lead the school. It's not my language to add Leandro. I think they're suggesting school boards reference it in a way to say, hey, we know that this requirement's out here and it's one of the things that we as boards will try to do is provide that education. But the language is optional from my perspective. You can stick with the old language on policy ten-ten if you want, but I think that's the intention and, and that's the history.
Well, I, you know, philosophically support Leandro. That said, all the questions and the five hundred and some odd cases still pending don't, none of that needs my action. It needs to work its way through the courts and all get resolved and it needs legislative votes and actions to put into material terms the final determinations of Leandro. Me down here at one little school board in North Carolina and several others, putting a few words in our policy, is not going to materially, I don't gather, motivate the state to change its formulas for the resources they provide. Am I making sense or am I jumping around too much? I don't wanna just throw some words in, into our policy if the state isn't changing their formula to actually implement Leandro. Couldn't we easily as be, just as easily be sued for adopting Leandro here but not having the resources as, as the other scenario that you talked about? It sounds, um, like I'm making this stuff up or something, but, um, I, I don't, I don't understand the actual ramifications and it's more than just words on the, the page here. We're adopting some case that's not completely resolved or hasn't worked its way through the legal process, much less the legislative implementation of those final decisions.
Let me just, and I, I think Mr. Powell wanted to say something too, but the, the, the Leandro decision that's cited here, Leandro v. State, the nineteen ninety-seven decision is a, the final and current decision from the North Carolina Supreme Court that says all students are entitled to that sound, basic education. So when I said there's continued litigation, there is a lot of fighting over what that really means. In other words, I've read you the definition, but does that mean pre-K? Does that mean a certain level of funding? Does it mean a certain level of programs? There certainly is and is likely to continue to be litigation over exactly how that gets defined. But I don't think there's any dispute about the, the broad definition that I've read about what a sound, basic education means. I think the issue, there, again, it is up to the board, the- I think the issue, again, it is up to the board, the reason this was added in this proposed policy is to say that providing this basic education, the fundamental knowledge, is something the board considers a significant duty and would be a guiding principle. If you're discussing how to allocate funds or budget, you might look to, are we doing what we need to do to provide, you know, that fundamental knowledge of English and mathematics that I referenced? I think that part's optional. You can decide whether this is a governing duty. You probably have to provide a sound, basic education, whether it's in the policy or not, to your point. And again, we're fortunate, and no one's ever sued claiming we're not. I think we do a good job as a system providing a sound, basic education to our students. It's really, do you want to reference it and make it one of the board's duties by policy or not? And that's really up to the board. So I don't think much changes whether you adopt it or not. To your point, this doesn't create funding, the state's not going to say, oh, well, Cabarrus adopted this, we're going to give you more money. It's really, do you want this to be part of kind of your rubric, just like these other points in policy 1010 that are already there in terms of, you know, is it one of those things to consider? And that's really up to the board.
Mark, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
The state sends this to us as a required PLS update. Are we allowed not to adopt a required PLS update?
I looked at that. I do, I'm not clear why they're claiming that it actually has to be required. I think we're required to follow Leandro, and that's probably what the lawyers that are drafting this are saying, since Leandro is the law of the Supreme Court, you have to follow it. I actually disagree with their, to the extent they're saying it's required that we adopt it in this policy, I disagree with the guidance from the policies to lead the school folks. I don't think we're required to do it. There's no law that makes us require. I would tell you as your attorney, you're required to follow Leandro. You are required to provide a sound, basic education, and in that sense, it's required. But you don't have to put it in policy as far as I can tell. So that's one where I respectfully disagree with kind of the suggestion from the policies to lead the school folks.
I was only going to say that whether we put in the policy or not, we're still bound to follow the Leandro case, provide that education as defined in that Leandro case. So whether we change it or not, we're still bound to that standard created in that case. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct, Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
Any more comments on this? So we're going to put this on the consent or on the action? Consent, okay. That carries us to 4.02, and we have several policies on that one. Are there any comments on any of the, any specific policies? I didn't see anyone send anything else out. So should we put all those on consent agenda? Yes? Okay. So those will be going on the consent agenda. All right, now we go to 5.01, which are the budget amendments. Ms. Klutz is coming up to the front. There were some questions about this, so I believe some information was sent out today, and Ms. Klutz is prepared to also enlighten us.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We have, I think, three budget amendments before you today. The first one being state, and I always like to hit the big-money amounts because those are usually the ones you're most concerned about. The first large one is the reduction in the fuel adjustment from the state, and that one was the one that had, we had the question about. I knew that that would be, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense, but, so the reason what happens with that is that the state has adjusted our fuel adjustment for the fuel rates. And so they adjusted it from the original allocation of $2.33 a gallon down to $1.79 per gallon. So at the beginning of the year, excuse me, at the beginning of the year, they allocated our budget at that $2.33 per gallon. Since then, you know, fuel prices have continued to lower, and so they've adjusted that. That's a $391,000 adjustment for us in Cabarrus County, so you can tell our fuel budget is significant. There are two transportation funding sources that I mentioned before. One is state and one is local. It is more advantageous for us to allocate and budget all of the state dollars in salaries because with that, you get the benefits of the state pay and the benefits, the pay increases, the workers' comp that's associated that. So that's one of those little efficiency tricks that we use to put everything in the state that we can, and then that frees up our local money to do more with that. So we budget our fuel in the local budget. So when the state adjusts, makes a fuel adjustment, I have to lower the state budget, and there's no fuel in the state budget, so I'll have to lower the salaries. And then I increase the salaries in the local side, and those net to zero. And then on the local side, I decrease the fuel budget. Okay? So it's just, we're making the reduction into local instead of state. Okay? So it's just moving that around. Okay? The other really large one that you're seeing there are the bonuses that the state allocated. That's a guaranteed allotment, and they, I don't usually do those until the end of the fiscal year, but because that was so much money, it's making my books look off, so it bothered me, so I'm bringing it to you now rather than waiting until June to do that. Okay? We'll go to local if there are no other questions. You're seeing the local, thank you, Kelly. You're seeing, thank you, you're seeing on the local, if we can go back, one, that's the opposite side of that transportation adjustment that I just explained. And then we'll go to the local special. Now, the first entry here is the Ingersoll Rand Grant. Say that fast, can't do it. Awarded to J.M. Robinson for the purchase of equipment and associated furniture and supplies for their automotive class. And then you'll see another award that we talked about just a little bit earlier, to Wolfmeadow for their intercession camps. And we failed to put the name up there, so I'm going to tell you it's from Jean Haas Foundation for that grant. And then the final one is to record the revenue that's generated, the Medicaid revenue. And so, you know, a while ago, we've talked with you about using PCG rather than Fairbanks as our provider to get our Medicaid, and so we are coming in at higher revenues with that provider. So those are, should be in booked and allocated there.
Higher costs or higher-
Higher revenue. So that's more money. It's a reimbursement of expense that we apply for on the EC side. So that was one, that was the biggest reason that we changed providers, is because they said that our revenue would increase, and we're seeing that it has increased.
And when we did a grant such as the one from Ingersoll Rand, is there a formal process of thanking? I don't recall that the board has ever done a resolution saying, thank you, Ingersoll Rand for giving us this grant, but I'm assuming the superintendent or someone else does.
Oftentimes, we will send a letter from the superintendent, signed by the superintendent, thanking the company or the organization for a grant, particularly of that size and that nature. And there's usually some sort of, what, grant presentation so that we have an opportunity for photos and handshaking and thanking in person as well. I'm not sure if that'll be the case with this particular grant or not.
I think you'd be a right neighborly of us to do that, but also with the Jimmy Johnson Foundation and other foundations that brings us generous to the system.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And so the final budget amendments are federal budget amendments, and they are, at this point, doing their adjustments from their planning allotment to their actual allotments. It takes the federal grants and budgets a little while to catch up. So you're seeing that there was an increase in the EC dollars, the IDEA EC dollars versus what we were planned for, so that's certainly good, and we need those dollars. And then the last one is just a minor adjustment where we were reflecting, still adjusting for those bonuses. We're chasing those all the time. And that's all we have. If you have any questions, I'll address them.
Are there any more questions for this? Consent agenda? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Klutz.
Thank you.
And then that carries us to you next on the audit contract.
Yes, sir. Attached on your screen, you'll see the proposed audit contract with our current auditors, Anderson, Smith, and White. They are doing the audit this year for the same amount that they've done it for last year and, I believe, the previous year. And so this is an LGC contract, an LGC drafted contract. It's standard. Certainly, Mark has reviewed it many times, but I don't think I actually sent it to you this time, but it is a standard contract issued by the LGC, and he's looking over it now, and he'll tell you, I'm sure, if he has any concerns with it.
It's the same form we see.
Always.
It's not, yeah, it's not one bar form, it's not very negotiable form. It's a good form, though. I mean, the LGC's draft in the way that I think is favorable to us, so I'm-
I apologize for not sending it up.
No worries.
Any comments on this?
This is the third year?
Four, no, I believe it's the fifth, actually.
But you said the third year that it's been the exact same price.
Well, you know what? I didn't go back and look at that history. Honestly, just recalling from memory seems to me like that's been the price from the beginning. I don't believe that they've increased it.
Is there any practice where you don't have the same auditor for more than a certain amount of years?
So there's a lot of, there's some things that they do as a CPA in general. So there's, you know, obviously our ethics that we all uphold and take our classes, and here, too, when we renew our certificate. There's also peer reviews that they do, and so another CPA review firm comes in and does their reviews. In addition, they switch managers in charge, they alternate those every two years so that we have a new set, different set of eyes. So, and this is a, this is a service, you know, I think of it similar to our legal service that's provided.
We have been kind of putting it out about every, I mean-
So we had our previous auditor for over 10 years, and then the board asked me to send it out for RFP. I think there was a concern with price, so we put it out for RFP, and we've gotten these, the same auditors. We were always, had a clean opinion and great audits with our previous auditors. We have clean opinions and great audits with these auditors. I'll leave it at that.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, with, I mean, I probably was the one that said that. I mean, you know, it's-
It's, it's good to sometimes get a, you know, put it out and just, just to double-check. But I mean, I think we should go ahead maybe with this one, but after this one, maybe to go out next year, maybe for RFP.
So I reached out to the board about two weeks ago, and I said, I know that there's a concern, there has been a concern in the past, and if you would like for me to go out for an RFP, I would like for you to tell me now before I bring that to the board.
I mean, go ahead and do this one, but maybe-
Next year to do it. But I mean, I'm willing to go ahead with this one, but maybe next year to do it.
That strikes me as about right every five years.
About every five, yeah.
Just to give another firm the opportunity.
Opportunity, yeah.
We are a public agency, and we ought to not be locked into just one company.
But I'd say let's put it on consent.
Right, consent? 5.03, class-size waiver for Pitt School Road Elementary. Dr. Van Heukelum.
And Ms. Beard.
Hey!
Dr. Beard.
Meeting members of the board, this is a request for a class-size waiver for Pitt School Road Elementary School. As you know, we have a state law that says all kindergarten through third-grade classrooms must be under 24 students. Each individual class must be under 24 students. There are cases, though, and we have a rare occasion at a school where there's an influx at a particular grade level. In other words, all the new students that show up at the door don't come across the K-5 spectrum, they come at one grade level, and that's what we have here at Pitt School Road. We have had an increase of students. They're not coming in the right grades, so they're coming all at second grade, and so we have two kids in the second grade at Pitt School Road that have put us over that 1 to 24 ratio in second grade only. And so that leaves us with a couple options. One option is to do what we call a combo class, where we reorganize the students across grade levels. You could also call it a multi-age classroom. And in this scenario, what Marcy would have to do is take some first graders off the top of the first-grade classrooms and some second graders off the top of the second-grade classrooms, put them in a 1-2 combination class, and dissolve an entire class of students, and sprinkle those students across the other remaining classes. We've done that in the past. We have several combo classes in our district right now. They run fine, and our kids learn in those environments, but it does disrupt the students. It disrupts the families, the connection that the students have had to the teacher. We're going to send a letter to you as a parent and say, we're going to move your child's teacher from Ms. so-and-so to Ms. so-and-so, and we hate to do that, but we have to do it to comply with the law. As Marcy kind of looked at that situation, talked with her team, her team and Marcy really kind of felt like they would rather just ask for a waiver and add one extra student into two of those classrooms. And so we now have two teachers at Pitt School Road Elementary School who have 25 kids in their class, not 24 kids in their class. We're supporting those classrooms with TAs, the extra teacher assistants that we have from several months ago. So during reading and math time in particular, they have dedicated support to facilitate small group instruction. So it's not one teacher with 25 kids, it's one teacher with 25 kids and a teacher assistant to facilitate those, those small groups. So in order to do that, we do need board approval. I've already talked to the State Department, and they understand this is on the agenda tonight, and so there, this is a formality of sorts. We've done this one time in the past. We did this at Culture and Web, I believe, two years ago. We don't usually have to do it, but this is a situation where we are, would like to ask that.
One question, all right, if we have to do it this year, we'd have to do it again next year because won't those little first graders go to the second grader and, I mean, at the same school?
Yeah, Marcy will know that, and she'll make sure at the beginning of the year, she'll have more, she'll allocate another teacher there and decrease in another area.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Consent? Consent? Let's go. All right. Thank you, Dr. Beard, for coming out for that quick. All right, Royal Oaks Elementary site work. Mr. Louder.
As you're aware, we are starting the Royal Oaks project. We have a very limited timeframe to do that. We bid the project to have us, to be able to award just the site work portion ahead of the building portion. And in doing so, Cabarrus County, if they had the funding available, could allow us then to award that portion of the contract to start early to do off-site site work, which is the new bus entrance, demolition, some structures we've already purchased. And that's one thing to get a couple of months head start on the actual construction of the building because they won't vacate it till like June 7th or June 8th. What you see attached to your agenda item is a letter that I wrote to Cabarrus County because they needed that last week in order to make their agenda, but, and they did pass, or they did talk about and put on their consent agenda tonight at their meeting, a resolution for reimbursement from bond funds to allow them to do, to be able to reimburse themselves by putting the money up front, and then once the bonds are sold, reimburse themselves for that. So this is just formalizing that request from you to them to ask them to request that $2.19 million.
Any questions on this for Dr. , for Mr. Louder? Consent? Any questions on this for Dr., for Mr. Louder? Consent? All right. Mr. Louder, that takes you to the 10-year plan.
And that's what takes me to the HVAC, I believe.
HVAC, yeah, I put the page, all right.
As you're aware, we, we have a chiller replacement project at Concord Middle School. We had it at one time to completely replace it, but we didn't have the funding to do that. But unfortunately, and I think some of you had some questions about the study that said this, you know, chiller should last until 2019. Unfortunately, we did have some mechanical figures within that unit. Therefore, we need to go ahead and replace it. So what we have done is go in and find out exactly the components we could replace right now and look for the budget money to do so. We've actually had to rebid it and restructure it a couple of times just to try to get within a budget money we could, we could scrape up enough money to do so. We actually even used the Department of Instru-, Department of Instruction to come down and certify our actual bid documents. So therefore, he was, you know, he was comfortable with what equipment we were purchasing without having to hire a separate engineering contract to do so, thus allowing us to reduce the budget even further. But this is, we had, we received bids and obviously I think the bid tab is attached for you. But JCI York was our lowest bidder. And at that point in time, we were just asking that we, you know, because it is over $300,000, it does need a board approval for us to be able to award that contract.
Any questions for Mr. Louder? I think someone had some concern about the age of the bid tabulation. Will they still honor the price that's on there even though the bid tabulation was October-ish?
Yes, sir. We make sure that, once we took our bids, that they would be, you know, good for a bit of time. And they have honored that.
All right, consent?
Kelly's Money Tree.
You know she's not going to let go of it.
So this was a capital project that we asked, that went through the Budget Committee and we asked the county for last year and they were able to fund that. So it was a, it was a really large project and there was two phases of it that we were able to break it into. So we're able to do the first phase, and this is what he's talking about. We were not able to do, it's about a million more that they weren't able to fund, but we can get this part. But it, it was approved by the county for this fiscal year.
So it was, so we've got...
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Consent?
Consent? All right. So it's consent after all?
Yes, it is.
Now, I'm still waiting for you to talk about the 10-year plan. It's not Super Bowl money.
Yes, at this point in time, I don't know that y'all wish for me to go over the 10-year plan. Again, I'm here to basically answer any questions you may have or any clarifications you may have had because I think we went through it pretty thoroughly here at our work session just recently. Well, I, I, I do too, Ms. Clutz.
Mr. Walter, I think this is the first time it's televised for the public. I think we ought to go through it again. What are the wishes of the remainder of the board?
Is the, is the plan on board docs, is it available?
Yes, sir.
For everybody to just download and look at it at their leisure? Mr. Walter, is that not appropriate?
No, it's an option, but I think I'd prefer that we at least go over this as a big dollar amount.
It was in the paper.
They did a big article in the paper, a huge article in the paper, and went over it in the paper.
Are there specific comments? I don't see that there's interest in doing through the whole plan, but I'm sure that there are tidbits in the plan that we might want to see added or adjusted. So Dr. Phillips, you have something that you want to say?
Right. So at the commissioner's retreat on Friday, you, you presented these timelines, which were not available previous to that. And after looking through them, the one, the only thing that I'm a little bit concerned about is that the, is the sequencing of the new middle school, sorry, new elementary school for the, what, what area, Southwest, so the Harrisburg area. That would not actually open until it looks like August 2021. Can we really wait that long for a new elementary school in that area?
Well, in fact, obviously, we will have to obviously do some additional rearranging or some capital of the schools or whatever. But we have talked to, looked to the county about, you know, opportunities for us to resequence those if their funding would be made available. They have asked us for our three highest priorities. And those highest priorities are the high school, middle school, and the elementary school. And with doing that, that would move that one forward. What we were doing, reasoning we were spaced that way, reasoning on that timeline is because we were trying to space out the dollars based on the actual amounts of those dollars. Plus also, you recall, on the replacement slash swing school, we pretty much had to have one school ahead of the other or else that swing system doesn't work. And that's why it kind of moved ahead a little bit of Mount, the Harrisburg school.
No, I appreciated that that's, that's why you did that, because you were trying to get the, the two new schools in the downtown Concord area built in the first five years. But just seeing this, it almost seems like we need to do the Harrisburg one first and then come in and start the two downtown Concord schools. Because they're not bursting at seams like the Harrisburg schools, but...
And I would just say that I think what Mr. Louder was saying is the conversation we had then was to try to get them our needs and kind of a sequence. And then they want to be able to process that. And things like property were a big part of that. So for example, this doesn't mean any of this is right, but if they had $3 million surplus now, they may go ahead and buy property for an elementary school or a high school or a middle school. And so all of that becomes part of their equation. So I feel like in the next couple of weeks, them being able to process that may determine that. Because I don't think anybody here disagrees with what you're saying. There's definitely going to be a need for that. It all depends on the three elementary schools that serve that area. Can mobile units be used effectively there? And then are they going to buy property tomorrow? Or are they going to buy property two years from now? And then that will kind of drive that discussion. So I think you're right. I just think there's, we're kind of in this, we presented to them and we haven't really heard back and let them digest that. And there will be some tweaking based on that, if that makes sense.
Well, as long as we can consider the plan to just be what's in this binder minus the sequencing, the timelines, then I'm ready to support the plan. But I think we need to take a closer look at the sequencing to try to get that Harrisburg Elementary School, it's not Harrisburg Elementary School, but a new elementary school in the Harrisburg area open sooner than 2021.
And with the timeline, we did not include that as part of the 10-year plan because that's basically a financial tool for, for the county just to be able to look at it from their standpoint. It's how, how, when would the money need to come based on each project? Those projects can shift anywhere within that five-year period. They just need to know at what sequence we would require a certain amount of money for each project we presented. And that's what that was for, which is more for financial purposes, not necessarily 10-year plan.
I do have a question. One of, in some of your charts, obviously, we made a couple, we made a decision to move our magnet program from Patriots to STEM Magnet to, from Patriots over to Arbrown McAllister in Beverly Hills. Could y'all update your matrices with the program capacities and reflect those population numbers so that this presentation reflects the latest board action? I think that that would help us get a clearer picture of what we are dealing with downtown because we did add 200 and some students to the, those two schools downtown and move some out of Patriots. So that helps show that there is a little bit of relief in the works for Patriots. Another observation, and Dr., Mr. Walter also said something to me about it today, is that last year, there was a matrix that showed how many, the program capacity for each of the schools. It also showed the number, the max number of mobile units that could be put at each one of the schools. And I was wondering if it would be too difficult to update that matrix and put that as an appendies, appendices to this plan so that we would have that to refer to later on. You don't have to extrapolate it out, just do today, but it would be nice to keep that updated because a lot of work was done on that last year. And I think it's a valuable tool going forward.
We have a spreadsheet that basically shows every mobile, where every mobile unit is and what every mobile is allowed at each school. And that has been updated every time we move, mobile unit changes. And that is an updated spreadsheet, just a matter of just attaching it.
Yeah, with this one, Ms. Reimer, I believe you, well, Dr. Phillips has the, so we just, I think if you just update it, it kind of encapsulates all the...
What was given at the retreat last year, uses that.
It's kind of a one-stop shop. So the data, I mean, the form's already there. It's just a matter of plugging in a couple of, a few of the numbers. It's not, you don't have to reinvent anything.
The idea of making that an appendix, like you said, I think is the way to go with that. We, we got, last year, we got into a lot of program where we had six different capacities that were listed and confused everybody. I don't think we want to go back there. But I do think we can, like I said, they have a spreadsheet. You can just make that part of the appendix and that is always available. And then we won't get people confused on that area, but the information's there.
Yeah, I think, you know, last year, we had even the, the inventory of developments that were out there. I don't think we need that. But, but I do believe you should put the date that you, that these numbers are valid from. So, you know, when we were talking to the commissioners at the retreat, we said the data was valid up to a certain point. We should say that this 10-year study is based on what we knew as of this date. Because I know Conapus is looking at some rezoning already and Harrisburg's probably got some in Concord as well. And those are going to be popping on top of the estimates that we've already given them. So they're going to blow us out of the water with more information than what we have available to us.
I have already been asked by a couple of municipalities, how much did I put in there for them to grow? And I said, I do not.
Right. That's right. Our, our study doesn't allow for any other growth other than a five-year build-out. But that's why I say let's put a date so that we know as of this date, these were what was, what were approved. And then we can always do the arithmetic next year when we update this plan. And we'll go from that date on. It should be helpful. Any, any other comments about the 10-year plan that you, any information that you wanted added to it that would help you in supporting it next week? Mr. Walter?
Again, referring to kind of last year, we had these program capacities. And I'm sorry to keep harping on the program capacities, but they vary significantly at some schools. Like in Bethel, you know, last year, we presented a program capacity of 1,065 students. And this year, we're presented with a program capacity of 941. Yet that's apparently one of our highest growth area. So what's the big change in that, in that particular, why, why do we reduce the seats when we actually apparently think we're going to need the seats? And there are a couple of them like that. I was just trying to get my, wrap my mind around that.
I, it boils down to basically, when you have the rooms available, then you can actually modify the programs within your school to be able to fill that space. And that's what they basically have been doing. And that's really kind of somewhat up to the principals. And of course, with the elementary school assistant principals, that's one thing to decide what type of programs go to each school. So we may look at a school that has capacity and then we would change the program there to allow us to be able to use those very low use type programs because we have capacity. And that's why we do that. Where we do not have capacity, of course, we would not try to change programs to reduce the number of students there. So that's, that's pretty much...
Let me give you two examples that I think may help clarify because, like you said, you can get caught up in this. So when we have a self-contained program and we keep using the autistic program as an example, Ms. Reimer and I were talking about this today to make sure we could explain this. So first year that Central Cultrun has an autistic program was when Ms. Reimer was the principal. So they open up and they have four autistic students in that program. That takes one classroom. The next year, four more or five students come up in a ninth grade class because it pulls from four different high schools. And now they need two classrooms to run that autistic program solely based on how many students that are high school age are in the autistic program at high school. So now we just lost 25 student capacity and therefore that changed. So I think Dr. Van Huclem said last week, we had three or four new classes this, this year based on just the need. Students may move in. My daughter, both of my daughters went to Weddington Hills, which also had an autistic program. And I know for a fact, there were, there were people that move in from all kinds of counties around us to get into that program. And so because it was such a strong program, so if seven families move from Mecklenburg and Iredale and somewhere else because they know of, of that network, then they just lost some capacity. And so that happens every year. It happens with the building. And so that's one example that changes it all the time. The second one, I think, is in a school like Bethel, they have lots of space. And they have essentially a half-empty building. So maybe the speech teacher uses a classroom. And when we really get down to whether we're going to let them do that or not, we may say, you know what? We're going to put students in that classroom and we're going to have to float that speech teacher in. But when we have the luxury of space, we're using that classroom every day. We're serving five or six kids for speech. When we don't have that luxury anymore, then we're going to bump them out, figure another way to do that. But it kind of changes capacity. And that's why that number is always moving a little bit and a little bit confusing. And so we tried, Ms. Reimer and Mr. Louder and Mr. Burnett have been working on that all the time to say, well, let's go walk the building again and try to get as close as we can because, but, but again, that could change. If, you know, Pitt School Road, a bunch of second graders came in, well, if those second graders all need speech and, and happen to be, you know, have a disability, then it may change the capacity. And so it's kind of this evolving number that can drive you a little bit crazy. But, but, but I think those are two, two ways to explain that.
So when we say we're at 110% capacity, we may or may not be it based on a couple of percentages based on it being added, added and lowered.
Or maybe for that year, you know, like Boger, for example, has numerous self-contained programs that we're going to move to different schools. I think we talked about Odell. Because we know that we have students coming over from Royal Oaks, therefore, we're going to move that program out. That'll lower the Odell capacity, raise the Boger one. And again, that's kind of how you do that all the time based on the need and what students show up.
Exactly. So when I see this presentation and it says 141% capacity we're, we're looking at at Boger, that raises a lot of flags. Yet if you look at the capacity, I mean, last year it was 955, this year it's 861. So what you're saying, you can raise that back up again. So that 141 won't be as high. I mean, granted, this is all crystal ball stuff anyway. So it's, it's really not a specific number.
They're going to be way over capacity. They're going to have a lot of mobile units there. But if we move in, you know, again, the autistic program from Boger to Wyancoff, Boger's goes down, Wyancoff goes up. If we move it from Wyancoff to, and so those self-contained programs use more space than a regular classroom. And depending on how many students show up and where we house it, it will change capacity.
And for, for me, I'm, you know, again, what is our priority? You kind of look at which ones are going to be the highest overcapacity. But then if we can modify the capacity, it may not be the highest overcapacity. So that's where I'm wrestling on some of the, the numbers.
And again, it's an ongoing, sometimes one year's worth of students. You know, you're, you're building as close to capacity and you get a lot of students with a disability and think, wow, now we're at capacity in one year. We didn't expect that. Well, that was the second graders that showed up at Pitt School, that type of thing.
And my other question is, last year, there was a recommendation that you could actually save money by using a campus concept, middle school and a high school on the same campus. Did you look into that or, or not?
We looked at it from a standpoint of the new high school going in a, an alternative location to western part of county by having a campus style where we could maybe put the middle school and high school on the same campus. Our biggest problem is trying to find 150 to 160 acres in one tract to allow us to do so. It's getting harder and harder to do. Matter of fact, we are very limited on about the 100-acre tracts we can find for high schools right now and try to put 150s. It's getting a little, especially in the western part of county where the growth areas are. So we would, yeah, it'd be great to have both of them on the same campus or both of them next to each other. However, it's just, it's going to be limited on what, what property we as a county can, can actually acquire.
But we're saying we're still open to that concept?
Oh, absolutely open to the concept. It's just a matter of, we can, it depends on the right piece of property that comes in and allows us to acquire that piece of property. I mean, obviously, we're going to outlook, you know, look out for any types of properties that would allow us to do that. But I say we're not going to X out properties because they said, hell, I can't get two schools in that piece of property. So I'm not going to look at that one, you know. In our case, we'd say, huh, if that property is available and it's going to house one of our types of schools we need, then we're probably going to go look and try to get that piece of property. But just because it won't fit two or three schools on it, doesn't mean we'll just kind of throw it off the shelf and say, that's not what I'm looking at.
Okay, so the central area, well, Central Area High School, that would not be a campus. So you don't think there's enough...
If you recall, the Central Area High School plan, we already have one middle school very close to where that location would be. And we were looking to build another middle school to help realignment there to allow us to shift alignment from existing middle school to that school because it's very close to where we want to build the centralized high school. And then add another middle school that would better align with the, you know, one of the district areas that we'd be pulling from. So in that case, it probably wouldn't work out as well because I don't mean to have too many middle schools very, very close together if I did that.
Okay, well, that makes sense.
One, one of the things that, and I mentioned it to you, and two, we already found it when we were doing Odell. And when you were talking about the swing school and the elementary school that you were building, you put an amount of, a number of 650... And when you were talking about the swing school and the elementary school that you were building, you put an amount of, a number of 650. And my thing was that if we were building those and we were saying we were going to have our STEM program, you know, we're always saying we have a waiting list, and usually it's 200 or more on our waiting list. I really would like to see us even up that, at least 100, maybe 150 on both of those. Because if we're going to have those as STEM programs, that can alleviate, you're saying, well, gee, our population's not that big on either one of those schools. But if we're wanting to alleviate and bring in from other areas that are for the STEM program, we can fill it up. And we all know it's less expensive to do it when you're building it, we found that in the case with Odell. When you're building it, it's a lot less expensive than if you're having to build afterwards. Because we found that case with Carl Fehr, with Boger, when we had to go afterwards and build afterwards, it was a lot more expensive. So hopefully, we will consider that. I know that maybe our superintendent don't like them that big, but I hope we will consider that when the time comes. We know that is further down, that's not our first priorities, but I hope we will consider that, considering those will be magnet schools. And we can build it, they will come, they'll say, especially when it comes to the magnet. We've seen that happen, we know we've got waiting lists. And if we do that, we maybe can get them from those schools that are overcrowded, the Odells, the Pitt School, the other ones. And we can, we can, we can fill them up.
We more definitely look at the largest school we can build on that campus. Obviously, we build a whole new site for one of the replacement schools that may allow us to build a bigger school because we have more land to do so. Culturally, it may be a little limited on that site because it is a smaller site, an urban situation, so it may have to be a little limited on what we can put back there because of the site conditions. But we will, obviously, before we get into the programming portion of that and the design portion, if we can maximize it, we will certainly do so.
When I look at the ten-year plan, which I think is very impressive and I support it. Nonetheless, I feel like I'm playing three-dimensional chess because y'all have done a marvelous job of intricately putting all these pieces in here together. But in some of the answers and replies and the interviewing processes we've had over the last few weeks, I get the impression that we, suggestions would throw some items in this plan out of kilter or it would, I guess I'm trying to say, is this plan becoming so intricate that we are locking ourselves into a very tight sequence of activities and projects? Or do we have enough flexibility in here for unexpected circumstances that may arise? The point of a plan to me is to have a plan and to follow through with that plan and adhere to that plan for the foreseeable future. And I kind of don't want to be in a position for major issues, I'm talking about big things. Part of the way through, three years into the plan, which may be obligating now some other board in the future, to find ourselves saying, whoops, we need to make major adjustments to this plan. How are we planning to be flexible within this, the scope of this outline as it is?
We feel like this plan has to be fluid, for sure. One, you know, we do know what our priorities are right now. And we know that three years from now, we can have our best estimate of what grade levels and what type of schools we're going to have to have in place, okay? Now, beyond that three years, it could be very, it could change drastically depending on the growth patterns within the county, depending on the economic conditions within the county, depending on whether they can fund it, the county. Which may or may not allow us to build it in sequence, which we wish to have. Obviously, our preference, and the best day, you know, what we have today, we give it our best options of, this is our sequence and this is our priority. However, that can change drastically over the next three and even five, and as you get out six and seven years, it even changes even more because you cannot have that crystal ball to be able to determine exactly what you're going to need. But we do, we have identified, though, based on our population, that we're going to need a high school, a middle school, an elementary school. And then we're going to have to do some replacement situations, we're going to have to replace the high school, we know that's going to have to come, whether it comes first, last, or four years from now. And then just beyond that, with this, still within that same time frame, we know we're going to probably have another high school and a middle school, elementary school, we tie in with those in that six to 10-year size. So we know that, we don't know where it'll be, but we do know that we're going to have to have, based just on population and student population, we'll have to have that.
And I think we've had discussions with the county commissioners to the effect that, at least the idea of land banking would be, would put some teeth in this plan. And it would stabilize so many questions that otherwise could be very fluid and very unpredictable in the future. My experience is that a plan will become the gospel to municipalities. But without something really very tangible and making things an actual done deal, such as land banking, some elements of a plan, maybe not this, would be more difficult to actually implement and actually put into place. Further, that we would be giving neighborhoods and families and businesses six months' notice about decisions we had to make as opposed to a two- or three- or four-year timeline of how they could make their own plans in, again, their neighborhoods and business or commercial activity. So I'm just saying, I hope that as we work out all the details, political and whatnot, that we can get some commitments to, for example, to bank land that will be designated and earmarked for future use for schools so that this plan itself would be extremely reliable and stable. And not just, and actually be able to be implemented fully.
We feel like, you know, in our conversations with the staff at the county and then also with the county commissioner, they feel like that is one of our highest priorities, is to go ahead and start land banking. Once we have land banking, then we can determine exactly where those schools are going to go and can kind of give people some very distinct plan of this school will go here. And right now, with not having land available or having land in our books, can't really do that. But we can get, we know the general area, and we've tried to be general as we can, but yet still be somewhat specific in what areas we have to be able to provide relief for. And, but the county is very supportive of that, we've had major conversations. Again, based on our conversation, they would like to see us look at buying land and doing design work with cash and only borrowing the money necessary to actually build the building. And then on the back end, using cash to furnish it and technology and that sort of thing. So that's a, that's a good plan because that way you are not borrowing money for things that are, you know, somewhat fluid, like, you know, furnishing technology.
All right, board members, is this an action agenda item for next week? Okay. All right, that takes us to 5.08, which is the resolution in support of the Connect NC Bond Act. You can see before you on board docs is a, oh, wrong one. We're doing the 5.08, the resolution for the Connect Bond. And board members, basically what we're asking is, do you want to do a resolution in support of the Connect Bond, which would impact RCCC to the tune of 7.2 million? It's about 9.6 million to CPCC and 90 million to UNCC. So it would bring significant money into this locale as far as our colleges of higher learning. It has no direct impact on our system. Would you all like to have a resolution that looks similar to this?
Probably did have a draft of-
Yeah, I thought you'd sent out a draft, but this is not what you had.
I didn't know what you're saying, text or quite what, but it was an attachment. And it's essentially the same or materially the same.
Well, David, can you send out the draft that you sent out?
Yeah, I'll find my email to you.
Okay, because I thought, I thought that's what we would put up here.
Long story short, we were speaking with RCC staff at an event a few months ago and saw an opportunity to, Ms. Carpenter and I were speaking with those folks, and saw an opportunity to kind of extend our educational partnership, I guess is the way I'm trying to put it.
Because Rowan was going to do it too, I thought we were going to kind of do it to her.
Yeah.
Well, Rowan has declined to do this, but K, Conners City Schools has done a resolution in support of it.
I'll find my email.
I actually have it right here, I'm going to go ahead and forward this to all of you and I'll forward it to Aileen as well.
It's probably much the same language, boilerplate kind of language. But it seems like a very good opportunity for us to show our support for the community college system on this statewide initiative coming up on, in March 15th.
And now, whereas it acknowledges our partnership with Rowan first Community College on what will now be two early college programs.
Write me up some texts, Mr. Dr. Phillips, and we might, we might, we might shoehorn it in there somewhere for you. Happily, happily so.
The email is in your inbox at this very moment, so we-
Mr. Fairfield.
Mr. Harrison has written up, so-
So with that in mind, does it, so it does have an impact on us or it does not have an impact with the early college? Does that get, does that free up space where they can keep expanding that program or is that-
As I recall, it did not have any kind of direct impact on us, it was just a partnership kind of effort on our part to support their desire for state bond money in order to expand their facilities.
Some of the pressure off of our local economy, that's 7.2 million dollars that, whereas county doesn't have to come up with facilities for RCCC.
And which allows the county some flexibility.
So that could have an indirect impact.
If it has a direct, it has some type of an impact on ours, supported with that, otherwise it's more of an individual preference.
Yeah, well, like I said, it's an indirect impact and like a, you know, the 7.2 million means that the county commissioners don't have to come up with that. And as you remember, in the 2014 election, there was a bond for, a bond vote for their manufacturing center. And I think it was for 9 million or something. But, you know, but they're competing with, with us for, I hate to say the word competing, but, you know, we're all looking at the same pot and asking for something to happen. So this would at least allow them to do some other projects that they can't normally do. All right, well, it's in your inbox, if you have any more comments, just send them to me. And Mr. Harrison and I'll get to Aileen this week so that she will have the draft that we'll look at on Monday.
Along with any amendments that may be offered. Thank you.
All right, so that will be an action agenda item. And now that takes us to the Board of Education legislative agenda. If you remember, it was a, not this past week, but the week before, I sent out the legislative agenda in a very rough draft. And I had draft all over it so that people would know it was draft. Mr. Harrison has endeavored to craft this document. He's taken Dr. Phillips's feedback on the grading that was on our 2015 agenda. And he provided some grades, I don't know if any of you all had a chance to look at that. And this is an opportunity for us now to talk about, is this the form that we want? Or do we want to do something different? Do we want to put a grade? Do we just want to have a 2016 legislative agenda? I believe that we need to have some positions that we can talk to our legislators about. Last year, there were a lot of attempts to sneak legislation through. And if you remember, there was the attempt to try to make us partisan. And then there was attempts to do other things, you know, we were lucky to get by with our driver's ed money at the end. And the teacher assistance, as you know, they changed the, that and lost, we lost our flexibility. And thus, we've had to do some financial annex to save 80 jobs of our teachers so that we wouldn't lay off 80 teachers. So if you go to page two of this, Kelly, I think you're operating this monster. You don't need it, the letter is optional, but this is more the meat of it. So as you can see, in page two, we start with the low-performing grading. If you remember last year, Lynda Johnson did a very good job of fighting for us, and she was able to extend for one year. Back to page one or two, please. She was able to extend for one year the grading, the 15-point grading. In the 17, 18 year, we're supposed to go to 10-point grading. So whatever great things that we were able to do with our schools that are in, that had somewhat questionable grades, they're going to be worse. And guess what, some other schools are going to get worse. So the grading is only going to go down in 17, 18. I believe Mr. Harrison put in there that the request would be to change the current grading formula, which Mrs. Johnson also has fought for, to a 50-50 weighting at the minimum. And North Carolina currently averages 53% free and reduced lunch as an average across the whole state. So that wouldn't be too out of line for a state average. Also, maintain the 15-point grading scale. And designate that improvement as permanent and not subject to yearly revision. So any comments on this particular item? Okay.
Last year, I got the impression, and I hope I don't step on any toes in this, that the state legislature announced through the newspaper that, and media, that something was being considered. And that we then found ourselves rapidly writing emails to legislators saying, do this, don't do that, provide this, don't provide. Well, by that time, the deal's done. And the news is announcing what is eminently going to be voted on in the legislature. But many agreements have already been reached by that point. And it seemed to me that something like this, if we could, we could keep it simpler and just more or less use the state school board associations on agenda, verbatim if we chose to. But trying to put in Cabarrus County particulars and demographics and specifics and how it affects our neighbors and the neighbors of our legislators here in Cabarrus County, I thought would be more impactful and would get out in front of the issues that might arise in the short session of 2016. And to provide this to all persons running for all legislative positions. But I was just hoping that we could come up with something that would be truly impactful and express to current and prospective legislators or the will of the board on these matters. Didn't want it to be quite this complex, but it became that complex. But again, the desire is to make, our legislators understand our position on these topics. And then today comes the other discussion of staff and, or the retirement plan and the state benefits discussion of changing the health insurance plan from 80-20 to 70-30 and what that would do to our staff as well. But all this stuff is moving really fast. And many things can happen before the public is aware of them. And I wanted, I hope the board also would like to find a way to articulate the main issues and to be proactive instead of reactive, as we found ourselves having to be last year. That was my perception of my reactiveness. So I'm speaking personally on that point.
Well, I believe that this year, we'll continue to have to be reactive. Even if we put this out, we're really going to have to be much more proactive in getting out in front of our representatives and telling them how we feel about our, our different issues. And they, and this does not capture all the issues, this is only some of the highlights. So let's just go through these point by point really quick. But part of this effort was to help you articulate a little bit of a position to- this effort was to help you articulate a little bit of a position to the legislators, not just reading off a position, but to have a little bit of a background as well. And so, let's move on to page three, Kelly. Ms. Probst, sorry. All right, that one was dealing with the reduced testing assessments. I don't believe that they got reduced. And actually, I think federal government is now stepping in and making some mandates on us. Is that true, Dr. Van Huglen?
For what?
For testing?
Yeah, they're, yeah, pendulum's swinging back a little bit.
Okay.
They had a high protesting environment, and the new E S essay, I believe, is the act, is kind of trying to give states a little bit more flexibility to swing that pendulum back to be a little bit more moderate, which is probably a good move.
Okay. So, we might see some action internally on this, maybe not from legislators.
Right, yeah. They're not tying that decision at the state level to funding at the federal level, which is what kind of got us to where we are today.
So, do you think that this one really is, is one that we ought to keep on paper? This one here is on, up, now we've gone to number three. We're on number two right now. There we are. Reduced testing and assessments.
Well, no, I think it still needs to be on the, on the agenda in the sense of, it's now a state issue, and so our state needs to know that that is a feeling that we have, that this kind of obsession around assessments. So, now it's a state, state decision. So, I'd still press on that a little bit.
Okay. Any builds to this?
Well, I, I would just say, you know, when I sent my grading to Leanne Winter at the North Carolina School Boards Association, she pushed back that she didn't think that they deserved an F for this because they, the legislature did authorize this pilot project, which is going on this year in a few schools where they're trying three or four.
Many, yeah.
Many.
Quarterly assessments.
So, it's quarterly assessments instead of one big one at the end of the year. I don't, you know, I didn't think that really reduces the amount of testing, but she felt that that was a move in the right direction, and therefore, it should be acknowledged that they did at least do something, but they were...
Well, you know, a D school and an F school, for us, a D school and an F school is still pretty bad, so.
So, anyway, I, maybe we should just change it to a D instead of an F, just to be a little, little...
I think I made the comment last year at this time when we were putting together this legislative agenda, that I'm fine with putting the request out to reduce testing from the state level, but I also think that as a local board, I think we need to be looking at our internal testing practices and making sure that we are not over-assessing just at the local level, which has been my feeling since being on the board. And we've talked none about it, and that's, that's okay, but we're going to expect the state to do something about it, but we're not looking at our own practices very closely as a board. We don't have discussions about it and that kind of thing. Maybe it's something we need to do over the next 12 months before we come to the next legislative agenda. Same thing with the report card on page one, two, I guess. Kind of reminded that my kids brought home report cards, all four of them, and for me to complain about the report card but not look at the content and the reasons for that, those grades would, you know, I don't, I don't think I would be doing my job as a supervisor of those children. And I don't think we, as a board, have discussed, you know, maybe some of those low grades that, that we have received and that sort of thing. So, those are just my thoughts. Mr. Chair, since you asked.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. And I believe that, and we haven't really talked about this, but Dr. Lauer and I, because we didn't get the retreat like we'd like to, we, we had to leave out some major components in it, and we need to do a strategic plan. And so, that will probably force us back to this table, or these tables in a short order to begin looking at our, our data, looking at the results that Dr. Lauer got from his talk abouts at all the different schools and with the, with the different staff at all the schools, as well as the parents, and then to formulate our own new strategic plan that Dr. Lauer now owns and that he will use as his marching orders to go forward. So, we'll need to do that probably in the next month or so. And I believe during that discussion, exactly what you brought up, Mr. Powell, I believe this, when we can begin talking about that, those issues. Do you believe, you think so?
Yeah, I'm not sure. We were gonna, I mean, the plan is for us to have a new strategic plan in place when the new year begins, July 1, and Dr. Probst is leading that, and Mr. Phail is a big part of that. And to be honest with you, we lost that day through the retreat. And it is going to be something that's going to take a little bit more. I don't think we can do it at one of these sessions. So, even when you say, "Well, we need to do that in the next month," then you're out to March. And I would say that, I don't know if we can wait until March. So, that is one thing that we do need to talk about. And so, I know that Mr. Powell sent some questions in the past of like, "When are we going to find that information from the information gathering sessions, and when are we going to look at our performance data?" Well, both of those two things would be part of the process that Dr. Probst and Mr. Phail are working on. Those are great starting points to say, "Okay, let's look at this information and then decide what do we want to focus on for the next, the next three years." So, we really need to, if we're going to do that outside of two meetings, then we need to set a start time for that because it will take five or six months to be in place by July.
Well, the rhetorical question is, is how, how long will it take for you folks, for your team to be ready to have that, begin that process?
Dr. Probst was ready. She's ready now.
Okay. All right, board members, think about, look at your calendars. We don't have to do it right now, but look at your calendars, send me back some dates. It will be sometime during the week, and we'll have a called meeting to talk only about that, that subject. Okay?
I mean, since we lost our weekend retreat after all, should we also look at a weekend? You're a working man, too. You should appreciate that.
That's right. I'm a working man. Guess what? I live for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
But this is fun day.
I know. Look at your schedules and see if you have flexibility to do it. I don't know, Dr. Probst, what do you feel like the effort would be? How many hours do you think we would need to be locked up in here?
Mr. Phail and I had planned on an hour, two, an hour and a half on some questioning over strategic planning, and then the additional questions that have come into the board requesting data on testing and things like that. We were thinking about two and a half to three hours. The Wednesday night worked really well for, I think, most of the Cabarrus County school staff, as opposed to that Saturday. We appreciated the 5:30 to 8 o'clock, 8:30, as opposed to Saturday.
All right. Can people make that? We'll begin looking at your calendars for a beautiful Wednesday night that you want to take up with talking strategy. Let's move on to page three. My intent is to go through all 12 of these items, so, and we don't have to talk about them all, but, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody's gone through this document. This is the sales tax refund exemption. As you well know, the school systems do not get sales tax refunds, but county government gets it, state government gets it, all the colleges around the state get it, 100 and some colleges, all the charter schools get it. Just about every nonprofit in the state gets it, but we don't. So, I believe that that's a little bit of inequity, and that this one is allowing for us to get the same benefits that everyone else gets.
Is it possible for Ms. Probst to give us an estimate of how much we're losing because of that? How much do we pay in sales tax each year?
And that's exactly what I'm asking through each page through here, specific impacts upon Cabarrus County. You know, that kind of exact...
You don't have to answer the number. Just say, "Is that easily..." Okay.
All right, page, item number four is the school calendar. And I have been to enough calendar meetings now to know that this year was a real tough one. Next year is tough. We don't have a lot of room for error. We had a few snow days here, and I think that's, I don't know if it's taken all of our spare time out, but we, but we're doing by hours now rather than days, and because the calendar has gotten so reduced. This is to ask for flexibility from the legislators to allow the local school systems and, in concert with our local commissioners, to take control of our calendar and to do what's best for our community, rather than having it edicted based on someone else's needs. And right now, the state tells us when we can start and basically when we can end, and somehow figure it out between that. All right. Any comments on that one? Seeing none, let's move on. Number five is school technology. There was a judgment of $747 million. And I don't, back in 2008, court found that the state had not been consistently, or had consistently failed to fulfill its constitutional obligation of putting money in the school technology funding whenever they collected civil penalties, fines, and forfeitures. $747 million to cross the state. If you do it per capita, then Cabarrus County would get about $15.9 million based on its current population, something in that range. That would go a long way to relieving some of the county's need, responsibility to us for technology and trying to outfit our classrooms. I don't know, right now, I hear that there's absolutely no chance this will ever happen, but I believe that it's incumbent upon us to talk to our legislators because they, they are touting an $800 million surplus in their budget, but they don't recognize the fact that they have an obligation. So, to me, they have a 700, they have about a 30, $53 million surplus. All right, next one is teacher assistant funding. And in this one, as you remember, we did get a lot of additional TAs added to the mix, but at the cost of 80 teachers here because we lost flexibility. So, the state gave us flexibility, and what year was that, Kelly? Clutz? Was that like 2011 or 2010 that we got the flexibility for teachers and TAs? But, it's something, something back in those days. So, we've been operating for almost, you know, four to five years under this technique of hiring, and now, all of a sudden, they changed the rules. And, you know, thank goodness, we were in good enough shape to be able to not have to riff 80 teachers. So, we're asking, and this one is that they return the flexibility for the school districts, but maintain the, maintain the KIA funding at its current levels. That will get any... This next one is the combo teacher principal compensation. They have been rewarding teachers at the, at the, who have less tenure than, well, they don't have as much tenure as some of our older teachers, and the, the teachers that have more time with our system and in the state have not been able to participate in the raises. Not only that, the principals are ranked about 50th in the nation as far as compensation. And Best NC, Dr. Harrison, you were at that forum when Best NC gave us that presentation. They actually reported the same thing, and that the principals in North Carolina are extremely underpaid compared to the rest of the nation. So, this one here is a, is a plea to have them do something about the principal. All right, we're going to number eight, which is fund date stability. This is near and dear to one person in our midst's heart. Kelly, you want to talk about this one? Actually, I've given some examples at the bottom. If, if you remember last year, there were three bills that were floated up to the legislator, trying to have us give a portion of our fund date funds to charter schools, and the charter schools are fighting desperately to get the monies that we work really hard through our frugality to, to save and use for our, our students. Yet, they do not want us to know what their fund, what their balance, fund balances look like, and some charter schools have fund balances that are probably in excess of their entire budget. But, if you'll see on the 2016 request, there's some dot points about the areas that they're trying to get money from, like grants for federal appropriations, local sales tax refunds. You know, it's not like we get much from local sales tax, but we did a little bit of, and they want that, too. So, indirect costs, reimbursements for everything except Medicaid and Medicare, fees for actual costs, federal appropriations made directly to the LEAs unless it's specifically stated where they're supposed to be, if we, if, but they don't appropriate money like that. And then, also, some kind of supplemental property tax revenue, even if the charter school is located outside the taxing district. So, there are charter schools that are beyond our borders that would want some access to our funds. So, I believe this is something we really need to carry to the forefront because we could lose a lot of flexibility if we lose that one.
I thought Kelly gave a great explanation of it when we were in budget the other day. She gave a perfect example of it. She said, like, for instance, if a, a school, say we had one of our schools that went out and got a grant, say they went to a company and got a grant for their students, say, she gave a perfect example. Say Hickory Ridge, say their principal went out and got a grant for their students at Hickory Ridge, say a 10,000, we just talked it, a $10,000 grant for their students at Hickory Ridge, for their students, for a certain program, like we're just talking this, tonight, for that $10,000 grant. They went and got that grant for the students at Hickory Ridge School. Then the charter schools are saying, "I want part of that $10,000 grant," and that was for just those students at Hickory Ridge School, but they are wanting part of that money. Now, that principal went out and got that money just for those students at Hickory Ridge School. And also, in that same budget, we have, like, for our Bible programs, I mean, that, that's in that same, you know, the, the people go and they buy, you know, they put money in for just that program, but the charter schools are wanting to come back and get that money for those programs.
And the Bible programs are not supported by Cabarrus County schools. Those are, that's, that program's totally supported by the church community, and they pay all the, all the teachers and everything. So, you know, the church community works hard to maintain those teachers in the positions, and they teach a great course. But, you know, we're one of the few systems that even do this.
So, when my church gives a little bit to a local high school and hands them a check, apparently, they would put that check in the school's version of fund date. It would go to the system level, but it'd still be allocated or available to that school in fund date. But according to the proposals that have been floated in the legislature, some amount of my church's donation to that Bible program, or for that, for the other matter, of that Ingersoll Rand grant we talked about earlier tonight, sought by the school, gotten by the school, it would go into that fund date bucket, from the sounds of things. Don't let me overstate. And, and would just be a pass-through from us to the charter school, and the charter school having done none of the load work to, in effect, deserve, in effect, to deserve. I don't deserve the money in your, in your wallet. I really don't. And that's kind of what is going on in this. The, the fund date thing is, is, it would be laughable if it weren't so kind of infuriating.
What gets me, they're asking for local sales tax refund. Here, we worked to try to get it. We don't, we're not getting it yet, and the charter schools already get it. So, they want theirs, plus what we, we're trying to work to get now. So, I don't think it makes a lot of sense. So, we definitely want this one.
Right. And, folks, Dr. Phillips and I, we're at the policy conference in December, and that, this message came through loud and clear. This is going to be a huge, huge issue this year, and charter schools are really gearing up to try to come after this fund date. And I believe it's us to, up to us, not only to get involved ourselves, but we really need to get parents to understand that, you know, for their public school, for their students, this is not good, and the charter schools are not being forthright because they're not talking about what their fund balances are. And so, that, that seems to not be a part of the conversation, and... And so that, that seems to not be a part of the conversation, and it's hard to talk about the complexity of this, because this is extremely complex. They make it very simple, because they just say, we're just not getting the money.
This is an example of something that can be pushed through the legislature very, very quickly, with very little time for the public to weigh in. And it's probably the best example in the whole list of us getting ahead of a topic, a, an issue, and presenting it to our legislators, so that they know again what we think on that topic before they get to Raleigh and are presented with other facts and figures and arguments for or against some action. This is our opportunity to say, here's what this board believes on this topic.
Ms. Probst, or Dr. Probst, could you skip number nine? Because I think we already talked about testing and assessing, that's a repeat. Go to this one. This one, I don't believe is an issue yet, but it is beginning to gain steam throughout the country. It's called an education savings account. And basically, a parent or a guardian of a child or children would get the money for their child and be able to shop anywhere and use the money in any way to educate their The big pitfalls are, how do you, what's the quality control on this? How do you keep, and they could use it for future expenditures, for any expenditure related to education. So how do you, how do you police a program like that? And it has started to gain some steam, as you can see, in Arizona and Nevada, but I believe that they're running up against some real issues with it, but it still is lurking on the, on the horizon, and that means that people, parents could literally take their children out of school, get the money for their child from that district, and use that money to quote unquote, provide education for their child, but we're not sure what the accountability measures are and how you would, how you would maintain once you start getting hundreds of thousands of families doing something like that. It would be a very difficult program to police. But that's starting to gain some steam. The other one is expanding the use of school vouchers. Though I don't believe that has affected us too greatly here, it does have an impact in that private schools now become a portion of that, and if they continue to increase the amount of money associated with the voucher program, it will have more and more of an impact. So I believe, right now, our focus should be on limiting the increases and keeping the school, this voucher program limited in its scope.
As you may recall, in July, the North Carolina Supreme Court did find the voucher program constitutional. So there was a challenge, the district court had ruled it unconstitutional, went up, but that was the decision. So the legal, that piece of legal challenge is resolved in terms of constitutionality, and I think, yeah, the issue is, is it going to expand, and how much, and how much are they going to divert from public school dollars towards that? That's really the issue. Well, it, to me, goes even further than that. There is absolutely no accountability for this money. There are no requirements of what you have to teach. ISIS could create a madrassa here in North Carolina, and they could accept those vouchers, and so we would have North Carolina taxpayers paying for students to go get indoctrinated by ISIS. That, to me, is just incredible.
Well, board members, are you warm to this legislative agenda at all? And if you are, any other thoughts? Do we, do we need to take the grades off? Do we need to leave the grades on? Do we just need to reduce it down to the 2016 agenda? You know, I just gave you a, Dr., I mean, Mr. Harrison spent a lot of time trying to pull this together so we could have a one looksee at it, but, you know, I'm not sure what form we wanted.
I don't know. They opened to splitting it into two different documents to have a legislative agenda that's short, instead of 12 pages is really, I think, a little bit too much. There isn't much more time to, for this to be effective in the current election cycle. So these can be, they're unrelated, so it doesn't matter quite how we order them. They're not exactly prioritized in here. And for example, the voucher issue, you know, might be, on one hand, it's constitutional; on the other hand, don't expand it. But how we play or take a position on that, you know, is kind of up to us. But I would just like, in theory, to get to a document next week that is no longer a draft that we could vote for and actually implement and distribute, which, I mean, which no longer draft as of Sunday night, I'm sorry, Monday night, and is our formal stance on, on these issues, without going to hold a whole lot of revamping of the whole thing.
Given the time it takes to create this and the time that it may take to change it, I support it completely in its current version, and we'll put it on the consent. If anybody's, everybody's okay with that?
I do. Well, I do believe that a lot of it is in a draft form, and it's not really presentable completely. It does need some more editing and content to it.
Kind of make a motion that you edit it and clean it.
You can, you can make that motion, but one attempt was done to do that. And I believe that we asked the board to weigh in, and I'm not sure if anyone received any additional comments on this draft as it is. As it is, would not be very effective. English major in me, I think it's too much of a draft in its current form and needs much more substance to it.
Work on it. Work on it.
And I'll be delighted to work on it, and in hopes of substantive input from my peers there.
Now, that one, this word, this is against them, because people like bullets, especially riflers, where they can do it.
Send your cards and letters to David Harrison by Sunday night, please.
Yeah, anybody can crunch it down some. That's fine.
Thank you.
They love bullets.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Mr. Powell. I appreciate it, right there.
If you will, try to get David your comments by Thursday, to give him a little time, and then he can email us the copy, and then he'll give it, and then we can get it to Aileen, so that she can put it on the boardwalks by Monday morning. All right? Does that sound good?
So did we answer the question, did we want the grades included or not? Is it included?
Well, Mr. Powell made a recommendation that we include it. I haven't heard anybody else, so I don't know.
Either way.
Yeah. We could just make it single spaced rather than triple spaced and quadruple spaced. So, all right. So with that said, everyone agree, Thursday, you'll get your comments to Mr. Harrison, if you have any other builds for each, and just pick an item and work on that one item. Don't work on all of it. In fact, if, you know, everyone picks an item and works on that one item, I think that will help David out a lot. You don't have to work the whole document. So, I mean, there's six other people in here, and we don't have to do all 12 of these. Obviously, the last three look like they could probably fall off if we wanted them.
And there are links within the document to the State School Board Association's own agenda, but it's at a higher level and much more general, so you can confirm or cross-reference that way if you want.
Yeah, and part of our dysfunction here is that the School Boards Association will not have their document out probably until next month, because the session doesn't start until April, so they're not endeavoring to get their information on the same level as us. I don't think they feel the pressure of the primaries like we feel.
Is this action consent? What's the consent?
Well, Mr. Powell made a recommendation for consent, and so if you want to put it, I think we should put it on action, so at least we approve the document. Yeah. Because I hate to consent something that I haven't seen. All right. So it will be on the action, Ms. Monroe, and we will do the best we can to get you this, don't worry, it'll be available to you by Monday morning.
Yes, my goal would be to send it out to all of you by Sunday night.
Okay. All right, board members, guess what? Section 6, what does it say?
I made a motion that we.
Second.
Who seconded that? David Harrison? All in favor of adjournings, say aye. I oppose. Tim?